All right. I call the May 18, 2023 Planning Commission meeting to order. Commissioner Klausstermeier, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, staff, roll call.
All Commissioners are present this evening with the exception of Commissioner Lowry, who is absent.
Okay. At this time, we'll take public comments. This is a time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Non-agenda items. This is non-agenda items, public comment.
Non-agenda items, is that correct?
Yes.
Buzz on. Yes.
Great.
My name is Lieutenant Colonel Bob Lang, United States Marines, retired. I'm the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association representative for John Wayne Airport. Myself and several of the members here were here because we thought we had, in our error, we thought we had an agenda item having to do with the potential residential development on campus and on the golf course. I know this is not on the agenda now for tonight. I am uniquely equipped to address this. I'm a former project manager of residential development for the Irvine Company. I have an office at 17 Corporate Plaza. It's a good rifle shot from here. I used to inhabit the Banning Ranch on the other side of town. I'm an air transport pilot, a certified mechanic, a flight instructor, and the development on that area is just, executive summary, phenomenal bad idea. This is how we teach our 16-year-old pilots how to avoid murdering people if they have an engine out at John Wayne Airport. It will put them directly in the front room of the people who are living, who are going to be living on the golf course. When I take off from John Wayne, throwing 30 gallons an hour of highly-leaded gasoline out my exhaust, it's going to land directly on the pregnant women and the small children that are going to be living in that development on campus. For that, and a phenomenal group of other good reasons, that development, which I think is going to be in front of this board at a later date, is a phenomenal bad idea. You will note that I speak a little loudly. That's because I am profoundly deaf, according to the Veterans Administration, primarily from jet noise. I've been a pilot for 50 years. There is no way that people living in those developments can protect themselves from that. They could wear earplugs at all times. They could have quadruple-thickness windows inside of their housing. At some point, they're going to have to go out to the parking lot. At some point, they're going to be exposed to that sound. And at some point, after doing that, they're going to be as deaf as I am. So that's going to be a bad idea when it comes back up. We're already the third most dangerous airport in the United States. Everything that can be wrong with an airport is wrong with John Wayne Airport. The runways are too short. They're on the wrong side of each other. There's noise restrictions. There's no overrun. And this is one more nail in that coffin to make it more dangerous. And I think my two minutes are up. I appreciate your time. I'm obviously available for any questions.
Thank you. Any other speakers on non-agenda items?
Good evening. My name is Julian Stephan-Hagen. I'm a flight instructor at Pacific Flight Aviation based at John Wayne Airport, and I'm a hangar tenant of ACI. As I reviewed the materials that you published, I noticed that the noise map seems to be centered on 2-0 right and doesn't reflect any of the noise that would come off of 2-0 left. The airport requires all departing 2-0-left traffic to immediately turn 15 degrees left at the end of the runway, and they pass essentially over the proposed locations in the Birch Street and Westerly Place area, all at full power, all at low altitude. Even advanced soundproofing, I don't think, is going to make it a very good place for people to live. There are innumerable studies of the downsides of loud environments on people's health and psychological well-being. In addition, as a result of this construction, future operations on runway 2-0 left at the airport are curtailed. It'll have an adverse effect on my employment, my employer's business, and other users of John Wayne Airport, and it'll limit the benefits to the flying public that were anticipated by the County of Orange and the FAA when they allocated funds for the development of John Wayne Airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. The name is John Mahaney. I'm president of SOCal Pilots. So this, basically, to rezone the land next to John Wayne Airport as residential is just a really bad idea. It goes against all logic and good urban planning. The noise level in much of this is considered uninhabitable with jet traffic from 2-0 right. There have been noise studies, there have not been any noise studies on 2-0 left, and if conducted, would show an even larger area with noise levels beyond what is considered acceptable for residential development. The issue is that once residents are under the flight path as we are departing 2-0 left at 200 feet over the buildings, complaints will ensue and most likely will impact the flight schools and light general aviation traffic. So those who are pushing for this are ignoring the impact on the people on the ground and the aviation community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, moving on. Request for continuances, staff?
Mr. Chairman, we do have item number three on the agenda related to the noise-related amendments around John Wayne Airport. That is not on the agenda, so it will not be considered tonight. That will come back in a different form later, and it will be at a notice public hearing here. So right now, we're just taking a pause and revisiting that amendment, but it'll come back at a future date, but it's not on the agenda tonight, so just want to make that announcement for you.
Great, thank you. So item number three is off the agenda. Okay, moving on, consent items. Meeting minutes of May 4, 2023. Would anybody from the audience like to comment on the meeting minutes?
Chair Elmore, members of the Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I submitted some suggested revisions in writing, which I hope you will consider. In addition to those, I wanted to point out, on the next-to-last page, it reports on your action on a proposal at your last meeting to change the meeting time from 6:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., and I noticed the minutes, which I believe are correct, say that you unanimously approved the item as recommended, effective immediately. And so now being two weeks later, when I looked at the agenda and found the meeting was still starting at 6:30 instead of 6:00, it just reminded me, perhaps you can't always believe what you read. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion, call for a motion or a second on the meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the edits from Mr. Mosher.
Okay, second. Great, call for a vote. Great. Okay, moving on, public area items. Item number two, aeronutronic Ford soil vapor remediation appeal. Site location, near 94 Hartford Drive. Staff, will you please proceed with your presentation?
Chair Elmore, if I may, Commissioner Lowry is recusing on this item due to the project's proximity to his home, and so for this reason, he is not here, and it's an excused absence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Jenny Tran, and I'm the Assistant Planner from the Planning Division for this appeal of the aeronutronic Ford soil vapor remediation limit term permit. This presentation will provide a background of the project site and an overview of the proposed project. Afterwards, the applicant does have a presentation that they will provide. So this map shows the area that is bound by Bison Avenue, MacArthur Boulevard, Ford Road, and Jamboree Road. This shows where the location of the former Ford aeronutronic facility was. That was owned by the Ford Motor Company. The area in blue is the location of the former facility building, and the subject property that we're looking at is the one highlighted in red, the Bay Ridge Park Homeowner Association, which is adjacent to the former facility building. This timeline shows a background of the facility from 1957 to 1993. The Ford aeronutronic facility was operated primarily for aerospace research and development. During this time, volatile organic compounds, or VOCs, were used during operations to clean the metal equipments, and during that time, that was common practice. In 1993, the facility was decommissioned, and the facility was demolished. And then from 1993 to 1996, this area was rezoned for residential use, and ongoing monitoring of groundwater was performed at this time to ensure that the VOC levels that were detected at the time were at an adequate level that was appropriate for residential uses. In 2016, the Regional Water Board environmental screening levels were updated. These screening levels found that with the more stringent regulations and the advancement in technologies, the level of VOCs detected were then found to be above the screening levels, and this is where we are today with this area. This vicinity map shows the Bay Ridge Park HOA community. Specifically, 94 Hartford Drive is the area that we are looking at for this proposed project, and the 94 Hartford Drive address of NH stands for uninhabitable. It's similar to the abbreviations we add to pedestal meters and utility meters, and this goes into what the project is for this area. This project is for a soil vapor extraction treatment system. It is, as previously stated, the VOC levels were found, and the Water Board has mandated for to address remediation, and this is the method that is being proposed for soil vapor extraction and treatment system building. This consists of 13 vapor extraction wells, 2,400 feet of piping, and a 240-square-foot treatment system building. Inside that building, it will house four vacuum pumps, one heat exchanger, associated carbon vessels, holding tanks and pumps. This use is ancillary to the residential use here, but it is the location of this treatment system building that will be encroaching on required development standards. That is the reason for this limit term permit. With a limit term permit, it does allow for deviations from standard development standards on a temporary use basis, and in this case, it is for a 12-month duration. So as previously stated, the SVE and treatment system consists of wells, piping in the treatment system building. The blue dots show the location of the 13 extraction wells, and the blue lines show the pipes that will connect these extraction wells to the treatment system building that you can see over on the right side. That is where, as stated, the treatment system will be housed, and there, the vacuum pump will use a blower to pull in the soil vapors and remediate it inside this treatment system building, and the clean vapors will be emitted from this treatment system building. So as previously stated, the aeronutronic Ford planned community zoning district development standards requires an eight-foot separation from main residential structures. This illustration shows the proposed location of the treatment system building. As you can see here, the building is three feet from 94 Hartford Drive. Additionally, it does require a five-foot front setback, which is measured from the back of sidewalk. And as you can see here, the proposed location essentially abuts against the sidewalk. This treatment system building is designed in a way to ensure that it is softening the impacts of the placement as much as possible. There was a noise study that was conducted that ensures that this treatment system building will operate at exterior noise standards that will meet the municipal code. This treatment system building will also be constructed off-site, and an acoustical audit will be performed to ensure that these noise standards are met prior to transferring it to location, and then, once installed, the applicant is conditioned to perform an additional acoustical audit to ensure that it will be running at the noise standards that meets the municipal code. It will also be designed to match the architectural exterior of the surrounding residential buildings so that it can blend in with the community with similar siding and roof to match the style and structure of the Bay Ridge Park HOA community. And the building will be landscaped with zera scape planting to soften the visual impacts and to provide some screening to the building. After the project is completed and the treatment system building is removed, the landscaping will be returned to prior conditions after the treatment system building is uninstalled. On March 2, there was a zoning administrator hearing, and the action was to approve the limit term permit and to adopt Resolution Number ZA 2023-010. And on March 14, an appeal was filed regarding the safety concerns related to the location of the treatment system building. In this appeal, six factors of concern were cited, that is, location, timeframe, safety, quality of life, air quality monitoring, and home values. So there was a memo that was sent regarding the water main and a relocation of the treatment system building. That memo was sent prematurely. The building is being relocated, but the memo did not show the correct location. In yellow here, this is the previous location that was approved at the zoning administrator hearing, and on May 3, the applicant performed pot-holing and found that there was a water main located directly underneath the proposed location of the building. And in Speaking of Public Works, the location had to be outside of the water main at a reasonable distance, and this new location here shown in yellow is the proposed location, the new proposed location for the treatment system building. It still remains three feet from 94 Hartford Drive, and it still abuts against the sidewalk. This is about 8.5 feet difference from the original location. Overall, the applicant, MBHOA Board, considered seven alternative locations before agreeing to the proposed location that was chosen. Six factors were considered: disruption to neighborhood, proximity to homes, impact on parking, permitting complexity, implementation complexity, and power connection complexity. During the application's presentation, they will go into more details about the alternative locations that were considered. As were the other five concern items. Timeframe, this is a limit term permit is for a 12-month duration. The code does allow for a one-year extension of the limit term permit, and after that extension, the limit term permit is ended, and they must uninstall the building that is put in place. The applicant is required to get the proper permits from the Air Quality Management District as well as the Regional Water Board in terms of the vapors that are being emitted to ensure that the vapors emitted do meet the standards that are required from AQMD. And then, we're aware this is a temporary disruption on the community in terms of putting a treatment system building to remediate the soil. The ultimate goal is to increase the quality of life by remediating the soil vapors that are present there in the community right now. Again, towards the air quality monitoring, the applicant is required to get the proper permits from AQMD to ensure that the air quality that is emitted with the vapors are at the levels that is appropriate for AQMD. And again, with home values, this is a temporary disruption on the community. The ultimate goal of this project is to remediate the soil vapors and increase the quality of life for the people of the community. With the change in location, in Speaking of Public Works, you wanted to, staff is recommending two new conditions to be added. Prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall obtain an encroachment permit and enter into an encroachment agreement and approved as to form by the city's attorney office for the installation of the treatment system building. And the building foundation shall be constructed only of a slab and not be constructed with stem walls or deepened footings. Staff is recommending to conduct a de novo public hearing, find this project exempt from CEQA, and to adopt Resolution Number PC 2023-023, denying the appeal and upholding and affirming the zoning administrator's approval of a limit term permit with the modified conditions as stated. Now, the applicant will provide their presentation.
Thank you. Real quick, before we do that, Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you very much. The moratorium on Bison, whose moratorium is that? Is that ours? Is that those CTAs? Is that?
Hello, I'm Dave Keely. Dave Keely with Public Works. The moratorium is our moratorium. Bison was paved a couple of years ago, and our moratorium lasts for five years. So trenching, any sort of trenching within the public right-of-way Bison Avenue would require extensive reconstruction of the street.
Did the HOA endorse this location at the end, or was it just working together?
Yes, the applicant worked with the HOA, and this is the location that both the applicant and the HOA came to agreement on as the location to be proposed.
There was an expectation of it lasting one year. Maybe this is a question for the applicant after their presentation, but what are our triggers for automatic extensions, and what's the confidence level that it only lasts one year versus two or three? And what are the conditions that automatically trigger? Or do they come back to staff? How does that work?
Yeah, Jim Campbell, Deputy Director, there isn't an automatic extension. They would have to request an extension in writing from the Community Development Director in advance of the permit expiring, and for good cause, the director can issue an extension for up to one year, and that's the limit for what a limited term permit duration can be. And at the end of the day, at least as I understand it, and I think the applicant can help us out here a little bit, and that is, you know, they're going to need this facility until the remediation is complete. I think it's important to get this done, you know, to get those soil vapors down to a level that's acceptable based on the Water Board's experience. You know, they're the regulatory agency, the oversighting agency here, if you will, you know, get the soil vapor down so that we can protect the entire community here. And then, once that's accomplished, then the facility comes out. It's not anticipated. It would need to be there longer than a year, but if it needs to be there for two, it will be. If it needs to be longer than that, we're going to have to have that conversation with the applicant. They may have to file a new permit and get reapproved, but we'll have to figure that out, and the hope is that it won't be necessary.
Last one, is there a representative of the HOA here tonight, too, or no? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lindberg?
Yeah, sure. My questions were about the relationship between the fee owner, the HOA, you know, who had the authority to file on this behalf. Can you shed some light on, like, who owns the fee to this? Is it HOA, or is it Ford?
It's the Homeowners Association.
Okay. So, okay. Fine.
Commissioner Bartow?
Just to follow that thread a little farther, do we know what the relationship, or is it, do they have a lease? Do they have an easement, the remediation versus the HOA? How was that done by the HOA?
That might be a good question to ask the applicant. I think they can represent their dealings with the HOA better than I can.
All right, Commissioner Rosin?
When this was originally entitled, what was the timeframe for mitigation monitoring for the wells? Is this in perpetuity?
Our understanding is that the regional board has been working with Ford to remediate the site prior to construction, and I believe that it met their standards, and then the construction project went forward. I do believe the applicant has a representative for the Water Board here, and maybe they can answer that question and provide additional oversight. Additionally, it's our understanding that, you know, their methodologies and their thresholds have changed in recent times, and so, you know, while years ago, it wasn't an issue of concern, it is today. And so, you know, the Ford Motor Company is on the hook to make sure that it's safe and to clean it up. And so, this is the Regional Water Quality Control Board exercising their regulatory authority, requiring Ford to go back in and remediate. Obviously, it would be better if we didn't have to go through this, but it's an important permit to get issued. The system needs to be installed to protect all the residents of the community.
And the monitoring wells that are out there currently, those were a part of the original construction?
That would be a good question for the representative for the Water Board.
Okay, and then, just for clarity, and I appreciate that, in regard to the testing, not only did the testing become more efficient, but the VOC levels also changed. So you've got two things going on there. Is that correct?
That's our understanding. But again, I think the representative for the Water Board can provide a little more clarity there.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioners, questions of staff? Okay, I'll start with Ex parte communications. Commissioner Bartow?
None.
I had a phone call with the appellant.
None.
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 Okay. This time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I believe the applicant has a presentation, so if you'd like to come up and state your name and go forward with that, you can.
Hi, my name is Daniela Haman Nazarov. I'm an engineer with WSP and also the project manager. WSP is the environmental consultant for Ford Motor Company. I'd like to thank you guys all for having us here tonight, and Jenny, thank you for your thorough staff report. With me today, I have Ken Connor. He's the Senior Vice President at WSP. Teresa Tamburello, Vice President, and Emily Miller, an engineer. We also have here Jessica Law. She's the Case Manager from the Santa Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board, and she is the regulatory agency that oversees this project. To go over a few things that I think might touch on some of the questions that you guys had, I'll provide a little bit of background, a little discussion of the project and how we got here, provide some additional data on community engagement that has gone on for the past five years, discuss community concerns and how they are being addressed, as well as go over the system's safety. So as Jenny mentioned, this image is showing the area where the former Ford aeronutronic facility used to sit. It is now the One Ford Road Homeowners Association in a residential area. In the mid-'90s, when they were decommissioning the facility, they also did extensive remediation in that area, including soil removal, soil vapor extraction, and dual-phase extraction, which involves both soil and groundwater cleanup. The remediation was very successful. Not only was it able to be rezoned into residential land, when we've done investigations more recently, we've confirmed that the remediation has been very thorough and successful there. Where the 1990 remediation fell short was that it was focused on the former facility footprint and did not look beyond there. So the communities of Bay Ridge Park and Belcourt Terrace, which immediately abut the former Ford facility to the north, were not a focus of active remediation. As Jenny mentioned, in 2014, the U.S. EPA issued, based on additional understanding of the toxicology and health impacts of a chemical called trichloroethylene, TCE, they found it to be more toxic at a shorter timeframe than before, and they recommended that this chemical be reevaluated for sites where it was used. It was used at the former Ford facility. It's the primary contaminant of concern that we see here. Based on that EPA recommendation, the Water Board has also lowered their environmental screening levels because of that toxicological risk. So in 2017, the Water Board required Ford to relook at the site and evaluate with this new understanding of the chemical. As mentioned, there's also, in 2017, much greater technology to be able to detect this chemical at much lower levels than there was in the 1990s. Based on that evaluation, which is where we installed the soil gas probes that I think you mentioned, that we've been monitoring since about 2018 across a large area, including what's shown on the screen, the Water Board, through various investigations and health risk assessments, we've determined that there is vapor intrusion occurring at some residents within Bay Ridge Park community. There's 22 that we've identified so far. This means that the chemicals within the subsurface, through cracks in the foundation or other means, are making their way into the indoor space and potentially causing harm to residents who live there. As an interim measure, we have offered these residents air purifiers so that their air can be cleaned up, but that is really a short-term solution. The air purifiers are noisy. They're not interrupting the pathway. You could still potentially get exposed. So the Water Board has directed Ford to conduct active remediation within Bay Ridge Park through soil vapor extraction, which is a very common technology to do this type of cleanup. Jessica, I don't know if you would like to come up and speak a little bit on the health risk assessment and the kind of guidance that you guys have provided?
Hi, I'm Jessica Law. I'm with the Santa Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board. I'm in the site cleanup unit, and I am the Case Manager for this site. So with TCE, that particular contaminant and the short-term exposure risk, it can cause heart malformations in a developing fetus. So there's this really short time window, and really, it's directed towards women of childbearing age, and it's at really low levels, just slightly above our long-term exposure levels, which has our screening levels are set protective to a one-in-a-million increased risk of developing cancer. And then, just slightly above that number is where there is that potential harm to a developing fetus. So with that, we have seen those exceedances in some of these homes within Bay Ridge Park, as well as exceedances of those long-term screening levels. Because of that, that's where we would like to see the active remediation, and we are confident in it will be successful, given the historical remediation that happened at the former facility. We know that it will be a good option here to address the vapor intrusion and reduce those levels so that we're not having to monitor this site for the next 30-plus years to make sure that these concentrations aren't continuing to to get into homes or provide these long-term mitigation solutions. I know one of the the questions you had was about kind of concentrations over time. And with these particular contaminants, they don't easily reduce when they're at higher levels. They don't just diminish quickly over time. That's why I say if we leave it alone, we're looking to still have this site open in 30-plus years or longer for monitoring. And so, we haven't necessarily seen concentrations increasing. They're kind of just staying the same, maybe a little slight decrease, but not enough that would say active cleanup would be necessary.
Thank you, Jessica. So as Jenny mentioned, the proposed treatment system is a network of 13 extraction wells. Those are installed into the ground about 45 feet down, which is the the water table is at about 50 feet. So this would be all above the water table. They will be connected through a series of pipe under the roads and brought to a treatment system where they will go through granular activated carbon, which is the common treatment, to basically neutralize the chemicals, and then the air will be discharged out of the system as clean air. The construction we've anticipated would start, if approved, this summer, and operation would start at the beginning of 2024. We've done extensive outreach with the community in the past five years, so starting in 2018, when we did start installing the soil gas probes, we also started monitoring indoor air in these homes. And we've held over 25 public meetings, sent out over 10 fact sheets. We've even held specific Bay Ridge Park meetings to specifically address the concerns of that community. We provide Bay Ridge Park monthly email updates to residents about the progress of the cleanup, as well as we will provide a whole bunch of communication regarding the construction and the duration and location that we will be in, including phone calls to impacted residents whose garages may be impacted temporarily for the construction. We've also have a community project line where folks can call in if they have questions or an email, which we respond to within 24 hours to get them the information that they need. With regards to this, oh, well, I'll go through this first. So as Jenny mentioned, the community has raised some concerns about this treatment system, particularly the location of the building, questions about safety, air quality, quality of life, and the timeframe to remediate the goals. And I'd like to take a few moments just to go through this. We've considered many, many, many options about where this treatment system could be located. We've looked at parking areas within the community. We've looked at landscaped areas. We've looked at kind of vegetated areas along Bison Ave and Country Club Drive. And the options are very limited for a location that is technically feasible. As Jenny mentioned, this sort of is an example of the location analysis summary that we've done, looking particularly at seven different locations, evaluated for disruption to the neighborhood, proximity to homes, impact on parking, permitting complexity, implementation complexity, and power connectivity complexity. As you can see, there are elements that are infeasible for all of the locations considered, with the exception of the location outside of 94 Hartford, where we are proposing the system to be built. One of the locations I'll just mention here is this parking, long-term parking area in the northwest corner of Bay Ridge Park. This was a place that we considered heavily because it is further removed from residential areas. Unfortunately, because of where the power connection would be for this system and the additional trenching that would be required, we get significant voltage drop in order to power this system. And in order to offset that significant voltage voltage drop, you'd need to build a lot larger conduits, which would mean a lot larger trenching, which there is very little space within the roads there to fit that size of trench. So essentially infeasible. The construction would also take longer, and we'd impact more residents during that phase there. So the location that has been selected, this was done in coordination with the HOA. We did present some options to the HOA and solicited a 30-day public comment period, for which we received many comments about the location. And then, in coordination with the HOA board, we have discussed options and come up with this location here. The location meets all California Building Code requirements, most notably, the discharge point is about 15 feet, it's 16.3, but over 15 feet away from any opening, so any window or door. The California Building Code for environmental discharges, such as this one, is a minimum require of three feet, so we meet that. It also meets all Fire Code and Earthquake Safety requirements. So even though we need a limited term permit because of the city setback distance, it doesn't violate any California Building Code requirement. SVE systems are very safe to operate. They're the system is permitted under the Air Quality Management District, and the effluent limits that are there are designed for the protection of human health, including sensitive populations such as the elderly, the sick, or young children. The system will be monitored in real time for the first seven days of operation in order to demonstrate that it is performing as expected. And then, additional monitoring will be determined based on the the performance of that initial monitoring. Additionally, laboratory testing of air samples will be conducted. The system is set up with two granular activated carbon systems. That is a redundancy factor in order to make sure that if one is not performing well, the other is a backup, which adds to the level of safety. And a pilot test was conducted in this location with these types of treatment systems and showed it was effective and safe. The system is inherently safe. Again, the piping under the streets are under vacuum, so there's no risk for like pressurization or explosion. If there was ever a leak, let's say due to an earthquake or something unexpected, the airflow would not be out of the pipes. It would either just sort of be neutral or into the piping. You can kind of picture if you're sucking out of a straw and there's a small hole in it, it's not like liquid spews out of that hole. It's just it's less efficient if there is if there is a crack. The vapor is not flammable or by any means hazardous, so it was not posing a risk as hazardous waste. The building meets earthquake codes and will be anchored accordingly, and the system will be monitored full-time. Any alarm will alert our system engineers immediately if it's not running as designed. We've also had voiced concerns from the public about electromagnetic fields. What's important to know about electromagnetic fields is that they really decrease with distance through something called the inverse square law. So the intensity of exposure decreases by the square of the distance for every, let's say, inch that you are further away. So for example, if you are one inch away from the electrical equipment versus 36 inches, three feet, which is the minimum distance, that's a 99% reduction in potential exposure. Additionally, we've looked at materials that are recommended to block EMF, which steel is one of the number one recommended. Our building, incidentally, will be made of steel, which will further block any sort of exposure. SVE is a proven technology. This is a standard industry remedial technology that's been around for over 40 years and been implemented very successfully all over California and all over the nation. With regards to quality of life, we are very cognizant that noise is a concern. It's a lovely neighborhood, and we don't want to disrupt it. The treatment system building is designed with noise dampening and other measures to meet the 50 decibel requirement for residential area, which is per City of Newport Beach noise requirements. A noise study will be conducted both after construction of the building, which is happening off-site before it's brought on, and then again, it will be conducted once it's onsite and implemented to ensure that this is being met. We've also worked with the HOA to incorporate aesthetic elements so that the building itself will blend into the the kind of look of the community. This is only a temporary system, but we do want it to look good for the year that it's there. There was a question on the timeframe of remediation. We are very aware that this limited term permit is good for one year, and our goal is to run this system for a year. Of course, the water board will want data to know whether we can decommission the system at the end of that. But we think based on the performance of the pilot test, as well as other SVE treatment that has happened at the former facility, that the year will be sufficient to meet the performance metrics. And if not, we have sort of additional ways we can do intermittent remediation without that treatment system there. So our intention will be, after a year of operation, to remove that building. So just in summary, this location has been thought through and selected as the really only viable location. The system is going to operate for a finite period, and the building will be removed at the end of that temporary period. And the technology of SVE is safe and the most commonly used method of remediation for soil vapor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I want you to hang out right there real quick. While I have you, do you agree with the recommended conditions of approval?
Yes.
Great. Commissioners, I think we're going to have some questions. I'll start down with Commissioner Bartow. Want to go ahead and questions of the applicant?
Could you or explain what the process with the HOA was and what the nature of the existing contractual relationship between the remediation and the HOA is?
Yeah, sure. So we've been kind of in communication with the HOA since the start of the 2018 investigation. We have an established access agreement with them that permits us to conduct the sampling that's being done, as well as the remediation. We have been presenting to the HOA board, as well as the the members of the public, about this situation, about the health risks, about the treatment system, about the proposed remedy numerous times. And we have worked with the HOA to select the location that is being proposed. As I think someone mentioned before, the land on which we are proposing to build is owned by the HOA, and they're, through a voluntary agreement, are allowing us to remediate there. The state water board has legal authority to mandate this. However, we of course would love to do this sort of on a voluntary basis, if that is possible.
And just to clarify, the HOA gave granted permission to the remediation? They granted permission for not just the the well locations, but they're specifically granted permission for the location?
Correct.
Any other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Rosin?
Mentioned that this is just soil vapor mitigation. This didn't get to the groundwater, which was, I heard, at 50 feet?
So the groundwater is conceptually where the vapors come from. The groundwater was impacted from the former facility, and as it migrated to the north, which is off-site towards Bay Ridge Park. But the groundwater concentrations are very low and are shown to be attenuating naturally. The vapors, because they're volatile, they off-gas from the groundwater, and then they do make their way into the Vado Zone. But there is no plans on doing any active remediation of groundwater in this area due to their low concentration in the groundwater.
Okay, and groundwater, I would assume, is going somewhat south-westerly?
So the former Ford facility is at a topographic high, and groundwater leaves the site in two directions. One is north towards Bison Ave, and then ultimately, like Bonita Creek. On the south end of the facility, groundwater also leaves the the south side towards the southwest, so towards the Big Canyon, kind of Arroyo, the golf course down there, down towards Ford Road.
So I guess, and the reason I'm asking this question is, how did you determine this is the only location that it can be mitigated from?
So the mitigation is very kind of localized. The remediation is very localized. And obviously, with any distance that you place the system further away, there is losses to, you know, frictional losses, as well as, you know, electrical voltage losses. All of those would require, you know, to upsize piping, blowers, equipment, and make the if if you put it, let's say, two miles away, you would need enormous conduits in order to minimize those frictional losses, and then enormous blower to do. So it's just sort of unfeasible from that.
Localized, that when you did testing around, that you identified that this is the location generally that is the most impacted?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Harris?
What was just curious, what was the pushback on the parking spots on Hartford? Just away?
Yes, from the HOA, as well as from the, I think it was 18 folks who submitted comments during the comment period. They found that the use of the parking is already highly impacted in that community, and that further, you know, taking away of parking spots was unacceptable.
And then, so worst case on this thing goes three years. If that doesn't achieve the lower levels you want, what's the what would be the next step?
So the remediation cleanup, you can kind of picture as like asymptotic, right? So the first couple months, the first year is going to be the most important. And then, as concentrations are lowered, right, the effectiveness of the cleanup slows because the concentration is less. So once we are able to run the system for a year, we expect that the concentrations will be low enough such that either we are finished, or if the water board determines that we are not finished at that point, something like a pulsed or intermittent type operation of the system would be a way to let the kind of vapors build up. And then, you would, let's say, operate a mobile temporary system for a week, and then come back a year and run it a week. And that type of intermittent pulsed option is what we would consider at the end of the duration of this proposed kind of initial cleanup.
Any other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Bartow?
Could you discuss, because it was mentioned in some of the letters, the the nature of the exhaust coming out of the like you labeled the effluent stack?
Yeah.
How does that exhaust level compare to the exhaust from like a a water heater or like a clean-out vent or a vent for like a sewer system in a house?
Compare, what do you mean?
As far as, you know, the constituents, concentrations, health risk, I guess, maybe by the way putting it.
So the soil vapors run through, like I mentioned, a granular activated carbon. It's kind of like a Brita filter specifically for vapor. There'll be two in series, so after it goes through one, which will take away all like, basically, the contamination will zorb onto the activated carbon, and it will clean air will come out. We have it pass through two just for redundancy, and we measure both the intake, the middle, and the effluent to confirm. If you do see any, if we do see any breakthrough after the first carbon vessel, that's when we know it's time to do a carbon changeout, which means we replace the carbon with fresh carbon, and that main ensures that we meet the permit discharge limits, and we therefore ensure the safety of the any vapors that are coming out the effluent. We expect them to be clean, breathable.
So the expectation is totally clean, and that monitoring, that's, I think I saw on the write-up, that it was over the first seven days of activation. What's the monitoring look like after that initial period?
Yeah, so the first seven days, it's daily. And then, there are there's sort of two types of monitoring. One is a real time with what we call a photoionization device. It can't tell specific chemicals, but it can tell volatile chemicals in general, the whole mass of them. And then, there's also laboratory testing, which has the ability, it's not as real time, but it has but it has the ability to understand which exact constituent we are seeing and at what concentration. So for the first seven days, we do that real-time testing to see that the total mass of VOCs is meeting permit conditions, based on the influence of what is going in and that concentration, which we do not expect to be very high because the overall concentrations in this area are not extremely high compared to, let's say, like an industrial area. That will determine the frequency beyond the first seven days, and that will be anywhere between daily to every two weeks. That's sort of stipulation of the air permit, and that will be determined by monitoring. We will also be doing monthly laboratory analytical testing, and that's where we actually see the concentrations of chemicals. And like I said, we measure the influent, the midpoint, and the effluent, so that we can further monitor and make sure that, you know, we are not close to, you know, exceeding anything, we are not seeing any breakthrough through the carbon. And that way, we can ensure, again, the safety.
And so you're pulling like a gas bomb at the, sorry?
Sue McAnister, but yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My industry, yeah. But so you're pulling it at the front of the filter, between the filter, and then the exhaust?
Yes.
Are you sampling the wells individually, or additionally, monthly basis, or?
So we are just separate from this whole project. We do tri-annual, three times a year, monitoring of the soil gas probes in this area and site-wide. And we do also indoor air testing at homes. The frequency of that is, ranges between every six months to every couple of years, and that depends on what their previous results have been.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Commissioner Link?
Yeah, the exhaust. So can you kind of help me figure out if the exhaust is just air is slightly coming out, or it's like your dryer at home where it's kind of shooting out, or somewhere in between?
So the air is warm when it goes, comes out, so it will loft up. But it's not coming, I mean, Emily, I don't know if you have any information about how fast the flow out of the stack is, or Ken?
The speed of the, or the, not the velocity, the flurry of the air coming into the system through the blowers is, I believe, average of 650 standard cubic feet per minute. But then it slowed down through the process of going through the carbon vessels and the heat exchanger and all of the equipment. So it's not coming out at that same speed. I would have to look back at our calculations to see what we estimate the speed or the flow rate of the air coming out of the stack.
Is that, do you have a problem with the noise, with the exhaust part, or is that not a noisy part of the system? The noisy part is inside?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's correct. I don't know the numbers exactly, but I would say it's less than like what your dryer emits in terms of speed. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, Commissioner Rosin?
So I do have a question about noise in the 50 dB. You mentioned the Sunny Fresh cleaners. I went over and stood there just to see what that's like. And what would you determine that that one is? I read, I completely understand that that's a commercial system, but...
Yeah, that's a commercial system and not designed by us, so I'm not going to take, you know, credit or blame for the sound. What we've done is think through the noise suppression very, very thoroughly. So everything from the design of the building structure, the soundproofing, even the way the air will flow through, is being designed such that we are minimizing noise, and we are guaranteeing, even before the structure gets onsite with all the equipment operating, we are checking that it already, at that point, meets all of the noise requirements.
I'm trying to picture, I mean, I'm used to seeing a thing that says, you know, I wish the pilot was here. It's 110 is the, is an airplane.
Yes, I can give that to you.
75 is a lawnmower.
So 50 decibels, I just had a leaky dishwasher and have replaced it, so I've been doing a lot of dishwasher research. Most dishwashers are at about 55 decibels. At the very, very highest end of the market, the quietest are at about 48. So we are looking at something about as quiet or quieter than the average dishwasher.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you for your presentation. The applicant's here. Would the applicant like to go ahead and say some words, or?
The appellant.
Excuse me, the appellant. I apologize. The appellant's here. Like to say some words or have a presentation?
Good evening. My name is Amy Santella, and my husband and I are the homeowners at 94 Hartford Drive. We strongly object to our home as the location of the soil vapor extraction system to clean up the contaminated soil from the former Ford facility. We are not asking to stop the remediation. We are asking to change the location based on the safety of our young toddler, and we are expecting a newborn baby. The unit is proposed to be three feet away from our home, violating the eight-foot separation distance for this area. The location is arbitrary and was not the original proposal by Ford and WSP. And despite the lovely community outreach, it was never disclosed in writing that the unit was this close to our home, and it was never disclosed during the Bay Ridge pre-construction meeting as well. So the first time that we were notified as homeowners that this was going to be three feet away from our home was when the public notice was staked on our front lawn by the City of Newport Beach. We are continuously assured by Ford and WSP that the soil vapor extraction unit is safe in a residential neighborhood three feet away from our home. Despite this, we have not been able to be provided with any real-life examples of residential treatment systems, let alone three feet away from a home. We are provided with three examples of treatment system. These included the two commercial dry cleaning facilities, one that's 100 feet away and one that's 500 feet away from residences. And I sent in the photo yesterday in my email that we are absolutely appalled that the third example given by WSP that they're claiming is residential shows a boarded-up home on a vacant shutdown military base. It was also in the presentation, but it was failed to mention those comments. The military base was closed down in 1994 due to contamination, and the cleanup system took place in 2004. This is not in any way comparable to a residence with a newborn baby and a toddler living, breathing, and sleeping three feet away 24 hours a day. We will literally be able to reach the treatment system out of our dining room window, and now that the building has shifted as of today, it makes it even more problematic for us. Regarding timeframe, we keep getting different answers from WSP and the Water Board on how long this will be in place. The last time I spoke with WSP, it was running for six months. Today, it's a year. At the February 22 meeting, Ken Connor, the Senior Vice President of WSP, stated that the system will be on for a year, then turn it off, and then maybe turn it back on later. Also, all the meeting quotations are on the Ford NBfax website to be verified. It was also stated at the February 22 meeting by Jessica Law from the Water Board that in historical remediations, we've seen at other sites, we cleaned up, got their good bill of health, and we come back later and the concentrations increased. Although Jessica states that they have confidence in this remediation, there is no guarantee. Jessica goes on to state, "It's still important to confirm because assumptions can be wrong, and so from the regulatory perspective, we don't like assumptions. They can give you a direction, but we always want them confirmed with analytical data." Despite the Water Board's need for analytical data, we haven't been provided with any data to back up the claims they are telling us. There is not even real-time monitoring involved. The photoionization detector that Daniela spoke about was confirmed by Jessica Law to be not a lab-quality sample. So although it's a, you know, a standard way to measure, it's not lab-quality, and the lab samples actually take two to three weeks to come back. No studies have ever been conducted to show the safety of the soil vapor extraction three feet within a home. There are too many unknowns, as reiterated by the fact that no residential units can be shown to us by Ford and WSP. We are being asked to be the guinea pigs where there are clearly other options that can be used. And due to the city indemnification by Ford, there are no consequences to the City of Newport Beach whether they approve this or not. However, we do not know how in good faith and conscience the city can approve this. And my husband will continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Solomita, along with my wife. Like she said, we're the homeowners at 94 Hartford. I did want to start by mentioning that it was said a couple of times already that its plan is to, this building is supposed to last about a year, when in fact, it was, as she's kind of touched on, it's going to be a year running, and then it's just going to be sitting there for another year, as far as I understand from our previous meetings. But to go on, regarding the location of the treatment system, the original project document by Ford FSP did not have an alternative analysis until they received our objections. After our objections were received in January, all of a sudden, they had an alternative analysis that has written and shown all the proposed locations were infeasible except the location behind our house. All of these changes can be verified on the city's website. Out of the seven proposed options, I wanted to address options one, three, and four. Options one and three show the locations are infeasible simply due to parking. That right there should be enough. It's being, basically, parking accessibility is being put forth ahead of safety. So option number one shows five small treatment systems in various parking spots, while option number three shows one larger treatment system that would utilize seven, or several parking spots. To resolve the parking issues for all of these options, the HOA could implement multiple parking alternatives, such as enforcing the residents to park in the garages, as they should be right now, have residents park in the temporary vacation parking, and then that's near Jamboree. Or the HOA could assign temporarily parking spots, since this is going to be a temporary Denying either of these, these options values, denying either of these options values parking accessibility over safety, like I said. Parking is a simple fix compared to all the unknowns of having a system three feet away from a home with a newborn baby and a toddler at their most vulnerable state, or most vulnerable time of development. Did Ford, did Ford hire or consult with a parking consultant to kind of mitigate these issues? Because I think my wife and I came up with several different realistic options, which took about five minutes to sort out parking situation. As for option number four, that would place one larger treatment system, I think as was mentioned, in that long-term parking in that northwest corner, kind of near Jamboree and Bison. And I believe the, during the zoning administrator meeting on March 2 of 2023, the alternative analysis read that this location could not be used, utilized because of timeframe issues, and then also the power connection complexity. The alternative analysis reads that it would increase construction by two months. However, this is just the first appeal, and we've already extended this whole process at least five months. This all began in January, and now it's almost the end of May. And according to their analysis, the two-month extension would be a result of the power connection complexity, since they're routing all the electric, the conduit from the location behind our house, behind 94 Hartford. And I find it hard to believe that there's only one source of electricity that's, that it needs to come from behind our house when there's homes in the area that could be the source of electricity. Maybe they could touch on that later. And there's also traffic signals at that intersection, so there's electricity throughout the community. I don't know why it all has to come from behind our house. Another thing, at 1:00 PM today, we were notified by Jenny Tran, the Assistant Planner for the city, that the proposed treatment center would be needed to, the shift, as she explained, would need to be moved eight feet north of where it was proposed at the zoning administrator meeting. Making it in direct view of our dining room window and more problematic location than before. Along with a few of my neighbors that are here today, we paid $1,715 for this appeal for the location of the building prior to this change. Per Jenny Tran, the building would be moved, and as it was explained before, because of the water main. And since there was a water main there, I'd say that that location is pretty infeasible as well. Also to note that we were notified on Tuesday by Candace, Assistant VP of WSP, that the building would be moved four feet to the south, towards the firegate, so four feet in the opposite direction, further showing we keep receiving conflicting information from Ford and WSP. Since the change affects the location of the exhaust from the treatment system, Ford and W, Ford and WSP should be required to file a new, completely new permit to request this, since this was not presented at the original zoning administrator meeting held on March 2. This is an entirely new decision. We urge the planning commission to deny the requests and have Ford review the infeasibilities adequately, instead of completely shifting the building five hours before this meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Maybe your wife, why don't you guys both come up? Commissioners, do you have any questions of the appellant? Any questions?
Are you currently residing in the, in that building now, the residence?
Yes, we are.
I have a question. It's my understanding that your HOA owns the land. And your HOA is working with them and offering up or denying certain plausibilities. Have you had conversations with your HOA?
We have. In fact, I have sent all of my appeal letters, everything that I sent to the city, to the board, received no correspondence back. Also, was told by one of the HOA members when I voiced my concerns, especially with our son, that we should move. And then if we're not happy with the location of the treatment center, then we should move.
Yeah. Yeah, this is an interesting one because, and I'll open up the public comment here in a second, but it somewhat to me seems like the HOA is dictating where along this is going.
Yeah, and I was going to say, I also would like to add that we were never formally notified by the HOA of any of this. So, you know, regardless of all the community outreach that was done, you know, the mailers, everything comes general pre-sorted standard mail. There's never anything certified mail, especially to the homeowners that we received. So it was never that we received, you know, a formal notification that this is going to be at your home. And like I mentioned before, when I was speaking, at all of the pre-construction meetings, all of the mailings, the pre-construction presentation that showed all these things, it was never disclosed in writing that it was going to be three feet away. The only time that that was shown was when the permit, the public notice was staked on our lawn before the January public hearing. You know, so it was never confirmed that we received this information by WSP, by Ford, by the HOA. Like I mentioned, I've sent all of my correspondences by email and never received anything back from our HOA board.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment to people from the audience. Please go ahead and state your name and leave your comments to three minutes or less.
I'll try to be brief. Larry Conno, Neighbors, and at 92 Hartford Drive. I moved into Bay Ridge in 87, after I came from LA where I produced a, I was a film producer, produced a movie called Silkwood. And it was really to enlighten the public about the risks of big corporations that do things that may not always be above-board or correct for, you know, the health and safety of the citizens. Lo and behold, I come to Newport, and in 2018, when this started, I find out that I've raised a family atop a toxic dump, let's call it what it is. I sent an email yesterday about 3 o'clock, and then I, at 5:30, I saw on my computer it didn't go through. And I understand other neighbors had the same issue. So I hope that's part of the record, because I kind of said everything I need to say in that email.
Sir, please, please address us, sir.
I'm sorry?
Please address us.
Well, I was addressing Ms. Tran because I guess she was the recipient of it. I just wanted to make sure that my email of yesterday didn't get washed out because it came in at 5:30 and not 5:00.
Understood.
Okay, so basically, and I've lived, you know, obviously, in the complex for a long time. HOA boards come and go, some are good, some aren't so good. I don't know much about this board, but I do know that there are other places in this complex to put this machinery that needs to be put there, because this has to be remediated. There's a, maybe six or seven parking places in the northeast section that would be perfect for this, because it'll be on the north end of the complex. Prevailing breezes always usually come off the ocean, and it would take any exhaust and put it... and put it, you know, away from residences, and it would dissipate by the time it became, you know, a factor for anybody northerly. And I'm just scratching my head to think why on earth are, if there's a 1% chance that human health can be impacted by this machinery, then let's rethink this. Why are we rushing to put it in a place that's convenient for the board so we don't have to give up parking places, you know, when there's alternatives? It's level land, and on the other side of the complex, many times, we've had construction yards put in seven or eight parking places and fencing put around, and we replumbed the facility. So the issue of tying up parking places isn't anything new to Bay Ridge. The HOA isn't here tonight to add, so I would love to ask them why they're insisting on this. Because if this is approved, you're basically making my house uninhabitable at 92. I can't live there knowing that there's this exhaust that's the emanation point of 13 wells that take these toxins out of the groundwater and filter them with carbon. And now I'm supposed to be able to sleep at night?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Chair Elmore, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, as you probably know, the zoning administrator has the discretion to refer items that come to him or her to you for original hearing. And the zoning administrator meetings are currently held in the morning by Zoom. It's very convenient for the applicants. It's actually not very convenient for people trying to interact and express their concerns about the items before him. So it was unusual that this was not referred to you, given that it was known that it was a controversial issue. And in more than a decade of attending zoning administrator meetings, this is actually the first one I ever saw where the applicant had a half-hour or 45-minute presentation with PowerPoints and all of that, like you saw, to explain something that apparently would be non-controversial enough to be approved by a single person, the zoning administrator. That, point number one. Point number two, it was unclear to me, and I think unclear to some of the commissioners, but I think I now understand from the presentation that all the only thing before you is the location of this treatment system building. The wells and the piping under the streets do not currently exist. That is all part of the project to come. Apparently, you are not weighing in on that. It was a little surprising in the presentation to hear that the vapor is not hazardous, which I heard. I don't know quite why the project is going on, if it's not hazardous. And if the problem is the chemical in the groundwater and that's not being removed, only vapors from it, apparently, the hope is over time, like something would disperse in the air, that the groundwater is going to spread out enough. But the problem will still be there, but it will be so spread out that it won't be affecting anybody. And I would be curious how long it would take without this project, just for the groundwater to spread out to that level. And then there was apparently an issue about the three-foot separation, which is apparently critical to something. We saw a diagram that was 3.0 feet, and then I thought I saw a picture of something at an angle moving eight and a half feet, and I don't know how it could still be 3.0 if you're at an angle and shoving it closer to the building. And then finally, like the appellant, I did not understand why the alternative of putting it in the northwest corner in the long-term parking was rejected like them. I'm not sure why the only electricity would be at the far end of the complex. I'm also not sure why this diagram shows the piping would have to go a long, long way around the bottom when the wells are up here, and there would be a much shorter connection to it. So I think this was dismissed a little too easily. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Leslie Pratt, and I live at 96 Hartford, which is right next door to 94, and I would see the system right from my living room. Anyway, I want to first address the medical safety. I'm a two-time survivor of advanced breast cancer, and I've personally been diagnosed with the BRCA gene. In layman terms, this means that I am greater than 85% more likely to get cancer than the rest of the human population. My DNA just does not have the genes that 99% of the population has to prevent getting recurrent cancer. I was first diagnosed in 1984, and then after being in remission for 26 years, in 2011, I was diagnosed with an eight-centimeter tumor in my lymph nodes. I underwent extensive surgeries, chemo, and radiation for the second time in my life. I've been living at Bay Ridge Community since 1991, and purchased my place in 1998. Myself and the family at 92 Hartford, which was Larry, have lived there longer than anyone in probably 2/3 of the community. So we've been exposed to this probably 30 years. In addition, I have heart and other neuropathic conditions, often seen with VOCs, especially TCE and PCE in groundwater and soil gas contaminations. Also want to address, I agree with everything else they've said, the parking is ridiculous. They started this whole process a year ago. It was supposed to set up, I think, last February, and then they waited a whole year. I believe it was because they changed ownership of the WSP. Also, no one has mentioned anything about the property values. I'm 75 years old, and I have no husband or family members. My condo is my lifetime investment. I work very hard to secure and maintain this as a source of financial help if I am forced to some other type of senior or assistant living. There's no guarantee as to when I will need to sell. It's quite predictable that my place and the rest of three of ours would be unsellable or rentable with this toxic system right outside my window. And right, I mean, you can see it right from my steps. I have to pass it every day. The SV system outside my condo would basically be destroying my savings account. With all the medical uncertainties, I could not possibly continue to live here. Simply picking up and leaving comes with a high price. Why should we, why should possibly three households out of 166 be forced to abandon due to their very valid objections and concerns? And just in conclusion, how can they justify only three out of 166 condos being so adversely affected? This is a community, we all pay homeowner dues, and should be treated all the same.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, any other speakers? Okay. The applicant, anything you want to say before I close the public hearing? The appellant, anything you'd want to say before I close the public hearing? Okay. Staff, anything you want to address before?
I did want to just point out that with respect to Mr. Conno's comments, that his comment letter is in here, as well as a comment letter from Lee Healy, so those from residents should have, were incorporated in here.
Thank you. Thank you for noting that.
Mr. Chair, the only other comment I would have is that Mr. Mosher indicated that he's correct in that the zoning administrator could have referred this to the planning commission straight away. That is a procedure in the code. It is unusual, actually, for the zoning administrator to do that. So in this case here, I think the hearing process was lengthy, and the zoning administrator went through all those alternatives, and it went and had a very lengthy public hearing, and there was a lot of debate back and forth. But, you know, I see no flaw in the processing of the application to this point.
Great. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back. Excuse, okay, one sec. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Yes.
Just want to add, just to continue what my husband was saying before, since the location has changed, and Mr. Mosher did say that that, you know, angle has changed, and since the location was changed right before this meeting, if it is not going to be denied, we would like to request a continuance to really look at those plans a little bit closer. Like I mentioned, five hours before the meeting, we get the call that it's going to be changed, and it's going to further impact our home now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I'm gonna bring it back to the commission for comment. I just want to kind of, I want to point one thing out. We have a very tight box that we have to make decisions in for this body and its land use and for this permit. It's, as much as we would like to point out different locations and where it should be and why is it not there, that's not our job up here. And so I think, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna make a decision, we're gonna opine on the permit, given the parameters that we have as this body. And I just want to make that clear to everybody. And any comments, questions, motions for this one? Commissioner Bartow?
To touch on what Mr. Mosher said regarding the change of location, I think it was Slide 11 from the initial staff presentation, showing the adjustment along the line. How is it still the same distance from the building when you've got two converging lines and it's shifting along that convergence? I guess I must be missing something when I was looking at it.
The original proposal had the building, and I believe it was at 3.2 feet, and yes, it does shift approximately eight feet further to the north, and those are two converging lines. And we wanted to make sure that we met the building code standard, so it does move a little bit closer down to three feet, which is the minimum separation by the building code. And it also stays on the HOA's property and then doesn't go on to, you know, a different homeowners association property. So those were kind of the limits that we had. You know, we discovered this issue with the water line yesterday, and we had to make sure, is it feasible to put that building, that foundation for that building, approximately to the water line? And the issue would be is if that water line did burst, we'd have to go in there and fix it, and we want to make sure that building is safe and doesn't impede that. And so we had confirmation of that this morning, that we could reduce the distance, if you will. We would prefer it to be farther away from that water line if we could. So it's a compromise, even with our own standards, for where we would like to see that building. So it's a little bit of the delay in kind of getting this information out and bringing it forward today. It's very obviously a late hit. It's definitely something that we don't, we wish we could have avoided, hence why we communicated with the applicant, the appellant today. I'm sorry, that was a late call, but we felt it was important to let them know this change. But, you know, again, it is moving a little bit closer, really only 2/10 of a foot.
So it's from 3.4 to 3.2 feet?
Yes. I might also add, the original layout of the plan had this building kind of parallel to 94 Hartford at 3.2 feet, and so the thought was, well, if we move it further north, while still maintaining a minimum of three feet, can we then make it parallel to the street? And so on the northern, I guess, southern end of the building, it's about four feet based on that diagram, so it's a little bit more than it was before. So in that respect, you know, it is closer to their window, and that's to be acknowledged. But, you know, again, it's, that one corner is three feet, but the other end of the building is closer to four feet.
And I guess I was surprised, I'd assumed that was city right of way. Is that, that's not city right of way on the?
It's a private, it's a private street.
That's a private street.
Country Club Drive is a private street.
Gotcha.
Any other questions, comments, motions for Commissioner Rosin, then Commissioner Klaasremmer?
This one's interesting because it sort of flows in and out behind code issues, and it almost feels a little outside of our purview because it starts to talk about other things. But I can't help but think that, and be disappointed that the HOA isn't here. That speaks a lot to me. And then in addition to that, I appreciate that there was outreach and an attempt to work with the HOA to come up with a viable location. I also think that the powers that the Water Quality Control Board has probably could overrule the HOA and put it in a place that was more viable, in my opinion. And the concept of infeasibility in this discussion seems to range around financial issues. Retaining wall doesn't mean it's infeasible, and that kind of thing is disappointing to me. So I feel like this should be somewhere else, and I think that there are good options for it to be in other places. I would hate to see this get dragged out any longer because it does need to be remediated. That's also a known fact. This sounds like something that needs to be done immediately, and I wish that maybe the Water Quality Control Board could go in and say, you know what, this is the best location, and this is where we want it. I'd like to hear that, but I didn't, and that so puts me in a little bit of a dilemma. This is uncomfortable. It doesn't feel like it's in the right location to me. So I don't know how I could be supportive of the application in that regard, and since we're talking about an appeal, you know, I feel strongly that the appellant has a strong argument here.
Thank you. Commissioner Klaasremmer?
Commissioner Rosin, I 100% echo your comments. I have the same concerns that you do. I think that the appellant brings up some very valid points about different locations within the community where this could be located, could be relocated to. And I find it disappointing that no one from the HOA is here tonight. I think that speaks volumes. So again, I couldn't, I could not be supportive of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Echoing them, really disappointed about the HOA not being here. Would love to hear some elaboration, especially the parking lots. I also, you know, the eight-foot change at the end, I mean, I drove the spot, I'd walked all around as much as I could see. I checked out the other spots on Bison. I understand the concern, a lot of slope, it's actually more than the picture shows. It's, but, you know, you're jamming, I think you're jamming your neighbor here, and I think the other people are kind of like, well, it's easier on us. But the eight-foot change, I do think could have swayed other neighbors if they saw the impact now underneath somebody's window. I don't know. I think I'm leaning towards, you know, I think I would probably try to send it back to the HOA, or, look, if the county wants to, you know, dictate, fair enough. I don't know if they have that power, we didn't really go through that. But I do want to also bring back, I know, WSP, you're just trying to do your job. I know the county's trying to clean this up. There's nobody, you know, trying to be a bad guy here. This is just like, hey, we gotta get this done, and it's a really difficult situation. So I feel bad for everyone right now, but HOA, man, I feel like they could have really stepped up and kind of brought this together and made it, you know, kind of work out a little better for everyone.
Any words, Commissioner Langford?
Yeah, the way I kind of see this whole thing is the HOA kind of being the applicant, they're the fee owner of the land, they had all of the rights to kind of direct this process and where this was going to go. So I kind of see them as pushing this, and that they're not here is not cool. But it's also their property, and it's the group of them combined that are applying, including the appellants, and they didn't get their way this time, which is terrible. But the remediation needs to be done. They're all in their homes, and they shouldn't be, or something if there's, if the vapors are coming up. So this needs to get done, and it's unfortunate it's pushed out this long, it should have been done before. But I guess, at the end of the day, I see it as the HOA's land, they directed the spot. I'm usually lean towards, you know, private property rights than being able to dictate what they want to do. I want them to be able to do this and put it where they want, and not have some other governmental authority come in and then decide for them. The HOA and all of the people within that body should be, should have been doing the hard work and not forcing us to make the decision for them. And I don't know if that's already been done, and they've already had all these discussions, but I wish we would have known more about that. So those are just kind of my thoughts on getting to the decision.
Yeah, I too echo the fact that the HOA is the one that really you should be talking to. They're the one that's making the decision, they're the landowner, they're the property rights, and they're the ones that are dictating. Yes, can they dictate where they want to put it? Yes, they can. Are they putting you in a terrible position? Yes, they are. I don't understand why they couldn't address some of the parking areas as well. That was my first question when I read our staff report and talking with everybody. You know, property values, I want to touch on that real quick. The property is going to be more valuable when this is cleaned up, not in the shed. So it needs to get done, the health and wellness needs to get done. I, I'm not prepared to make a motion either way, but... needs to get done. I, I'm not prepared to make a motion either way, but if any of my colleagues are, I'll allow them to do so now.
Sure. Elmore, if I could just add one feature, so I can count to three. I'm kind of, you know, reading the tea leaves here. A tie vote would essentially be the equivalent of affirming the lower decision. And since we have a situation, so I just wanted to have the group be aware of that. If, given the fact that the HOA does have rights here in terms of where the specific location is, and they are not present, one option that would be available, that would give time, would be perhaps a continuance to the next meeting, if that's something that the body thinks they would like to consider, have the applicant go back to the HOA and see if there's an alternative possibility. So I just wanted to kind of add those two, couple features, is one that a tie would be the equivalent of essentially the lower body's decision being approved and offer that possibility of a continuance. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of the way I was leaning on this, too. So maybe I'll just take a stab at this for the group. I'd make a motion to continue this item, and I would implore the applicant and the appellant to talk to the HOA. And when they come back, have them vet to us why other locations, and tell us why other locations were not plausible. We would, I think, as a body, like to understand that before we could come to a conclusion. So again, a motion to continue this item would be my motion. Second?
And if we could, if it is continued to a date certain, which, the next meeting, I'd like to get Deputy Director Campbell's thoughts on what a reasonable period of time. But if it is continued to a date certain, then we would not have to do the additional public noticing and stating out the record.
Yeah, it's a motion to continue to a date certain.
The next meeting is June 8th, so that gives us basically 1, 2, 3, 3 weeks from today. So I hope that that's enough time.
Is that enough time?
It should be enough time.
If it's not going to be enough time, let's push it to the next one.
Well, you know, I see the overall benefit to the community of this application as well, given the need to, you know, obviously, address this oil vapor. I think everyone is supportive of that part of the project. It's just where this building is located. You know, I'd like to get this back and have it resolved quickly, because, you know, I think delaying is probably maybe not the best idea. But, you know, I can't gauge whether they can get this done in three weeks or not.
Okay, so let's push it to two meetings, then?
That would be June 22nd.
Okay. Is that, is everybody comfortable with that? Yep. Okay, so motion to continue to a date certain to June 22nd, and that's my motion. And Commissioner Harris? Second. Great.
The motion carries 5-1 with Commissioner Langford abstaining.
Okay.
Excuse me, a voting no.
All righty, moving on. Next item, which would have been item number three. Item number three has been removed from the agenda, and it will not be discussed this evening. Future consideration of this project will require a new notice. Moving on, item number six, motion for reconsideration. Seeing none, moving on, item, that was number four, item number five, report by the community development director, request for matters which planning commissioning member would like to place on a future agenda item?
I'll go ahead and give that director's report. I will let the commission know that the city council did approve the code amendment related to timeshares and fractional homeownership at their last meeting. They'll do a second reading at their next meeting next Tuesday. Additionally, the city council did approve the commercial parking rate amendment that you saw previously as well, and so that'll come to a second meeting on June 23rd. So, you know, we do provide this kind of tentative schedule here. I just want to let you know that the General Plan Advisory Committee meeting and General Plan Update Steering Committee that are shown here is June 7th. Those have been canceled due to a conflict with the Crohn-DeMare Residents Association annual meeting. Your staff attends that meeting and interfaces with the folks, find folks in Crohn-DeMare. So we're gonna try and reschedule those meetings for June 12th. At least, that's the tentative plan there. Last thing, you know, I do want to apologize. At the last meeting, we did change the meeting time to 6 o'clock, and we will do so going forward. But the notice for the public hearing tonight said 6:30, and that was sent out before the action. And so we didn't want to renotice that whole item to come in at 6 o'clock. So that was the reason why the discrepancy in the meeting time that Mr. Mosher noted. And so apologize for that. But future meetings, 6 o'clock, we'll do that. And let's see, so we don't have any items for the next planning commission meeting, June 8th, so we'll cancel that due to inability, there's no business. So the next meeting will be June 22nd, and the item that you heard tonight will appear on that agenda. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Request for excused absences. Commissioners, any requests for excused absences? No, seeing none? Okay, we are adjourned at 8:06.